Yeah, that's right, baby girl. It's time.
Morning.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founders Greg and Amanda Kilwin. Hey, guys.
Hello. Good morning.
We also have from our team Julie, Jessica, and Colin. Hello, team. And we have today, you guys, two special guests, Janelle and Sarah of Simple Grace Collective. Hello, ladies. This is a big party today. We're excited to have you all here. Our focus today is really talking about moving the conversation off of social media. Right? We're not gonna, we're not here today to tell you that you shouldn't use it. That's the first thing that you need to know, right? There is definitely a lot of good reasons to use social, but a lot of us are leaning on social for our business, like building a business on quicksand, or I don't know, out of sticks, or in a sticks or straw, or whatever, the three little pig stories, right? So we want to build on a solid foundation. At Get Oiling, we have that for you. And for your young living business, we are built literally for you, built by and for Young Living Brand Partners, going back many years and thousands and thousands of brand partners served at this point. So if you're here and you're new today, welcome. We're really excited to have you here. We do this for free for Team YL every single week. And it's not just about what you can do with our system. We obviously do talk a great deal about how you can use us. We work with you on the call. In fact, if you are someone who is here today looking for help, if you're stuck with something, you need help, this is an opportunity for us to work together. And we do keep dedicated space at the close of this hour for you. So go ahead and put anything that you might need help with, or if you want some strategy advice, you want, you know, me to look at your work, or whatever that might be, add it to the Q and A, please, if you're here on the live call. And if you would like to work together and have like secure dedicated space for a future call, you can go to getoiling.com/websitereview and sign up to work together on a live call. It's totally free. So today, don't really have a lot of slides to work through, because we've got some amazing guests here to share with you some of the things that they've created. So I want to kind of set this up and then let you guys introduce yourselves. And let's talk a little bit about the season of connection and really keeping connected with our members. I want to introduce you guys, but real quick, for everybody who's here, and you know, the date of filming this right now, this is October 7th, 2021. Facebook and all of its sister properties, so Instagram, WhatsApp, the, I don't know, the goggles thing, which has nothing to do with how we grow our business, unless, I mean, if you're doing that, let us know, because I want to know. Using VR to grow young living. I'm here for it. Can you smell with VR? Anyway. So in the chat, let us know, were you affected by the shutdown earlier this week? Did you try to log into Facebook and you're like, well, I said something again, and they tried to shut me down? Like, was it, did it feel like a repeat for you? Did it scare you? You know, were you going in to do something important and then found, at least, you know, here in the Western Hemisphere? That was like, you know, that was almost a whole business day, right? It was like a little before noon on the East Coast here, all the way until after close of business, like 5:30, 6 o'clock Eastern time. It wasn't just that, like, you got an error message, like, hey, we'll be back in a minute. They disappeared from the internet, you guys, right? And so that is a really big deal, especially if you are keeping your main functions of business, how you communicate with your customers, how you get out the word about promos and everything, that you are sort of the channel for information for young living, for your people. If you're relying on social media for this stuff. I hope that the events earlier this week gave you pause, and I hope that you were excited today, because we're going to talk about some simple ways, even some done-for-you solutions, that'll help you put more stability in your business, so that you can focus on using social media the way it's designed to be used, the way it works best for your business, and keep the rest of the most important things in your business secure. So without further ado, I want to introduce you guys to Janelle and Sarah of Simple Grace Collective. These are two Young Living Gold Team Leaders, who were using the Get Oiling platform for their own stuff, and then decided to put their heads together to make things simpler. And before you know it, they started sharing the things they were creating and using for their teams with our community. And if you are here right now, and you have gotten a freebie from them to plug into your Get Oiling system, they literally make stuff. You can just click a button, and now their stuff is in your system for you to use. If you've used anything of theirs, go ahead and give some love in the chat. Let people know how awesome their stuff is, because you need to get excited about this giveaway. They're actually going to be giving you a freebie today. So I don't want to speak any further about this, and I'm going to switch over to speaker view, so you guys can can take it away.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I am Janelle Anderson. I live in Western North Dakota. I have been with Young Living, I don't even know, four years now, and just love Young Living. And then, like myself, Sarah also found Get Oiling, and it has changed how we do business completely. And obviously, it added an area where Sarah and I could work together. We're actually cross-team. We're not even on the same team. But we just fell in love with Get Oiling after we figured out Get Oiling, like, actually, I didn't put the work in. I always have to admit this. They have so many resources and so many amazing walkthroughs. I'm the person who's like, nope, I'm going to do it myself. And Sarah was like, no, if you actually look at what they have, like, it's really actually good and easy. So anyway, Sarah, do you want to introduce yourself really quick? And we'll get into why we thought we should be here this week.
Yeah, I'm Sarah Haydenfeld. I live in the middle of Nebraska, the middle of nowhere. And like Janelle said, we both have a farm and ranch background, and we connected that way. We connected through Young Living. And, you know, our teams are not connected at all, but we saw, we saw this need. We need, we had this need for ourselves, first of all. Before, we had that gasp, gasp moment of, I mean, not even us this time, but before, in the past, we've had some problems with getting on social media and, and having that feeling of what happens if we don't have that? That's a big, it was, it's a big deal. So that's where we really started leaning into Get Oiling. And so we were actually on, on the phone when, when it all went down, and I, and we didn't, both of us agreed, we didn't have that reaction of, what are we going to do? You know, this is our business. This is our livelihood. We didn't have that, that deep, oh my gosh, you know, what's next? Because we know that we have Get Oiling, and we, we own our own things off of social media. We don't own social media as much as we like to think. We put our things up there, and we think that it's ours. It is absolutely not. We have no control over that, if you really, if you really think about it. So that's where we talked to each other, and we said, thank goodness for Get Oiling, and thank goodness that we have this, and we can lean into email. We can lean into our member area, which we're going to go through and show you kind of how we, we work things off of social media. So you don't have that panic when that happens, because it will probably happen again.
Yeah. And so I would love to see in the chat, if you guys could just answer some different ways that you are connecting with your team. But before you answer that one, answer this. If social media went away today, do you feel like you have something built in and that you are training your team on right now to utilize it? So we're going to focus on your teams, your, your teams that you have, not your potential. We know that Get Oiling encompasses all of this. And if you guys don't know how amazing Get Oiling is in all that they do, you need to figure it out, because it is the most fantastic thing ever. But we want to know, do you have something built in place, and are you working with your team, really training them, and how to use, utilize the resources you have? And I'm going to just go through the different ways that Sarah and I both connect with our teams, is we do it through Facebook groups. We do it through Facebook Messenger. We do it through just texting them. We do it through email. And the solution that we all need to have in place, I'm just going to say this, as a fellow Young Living Brand Partner, you need to have something in place that you have a place for community and education for your teams, and an off-social-media community. And so we believe that now is the time to make sure that you are doing the things, checking them off the list, and getting them in there. And so we, like we said, we still use our Facebook groups. We are still there. We're still present. We have mentors groups that we work with. We run one of our business groups off of, well, we use Simple Grace. If you guys haven't found us, we do have a Facebook group, so make sure you guys jump in there. We would love to have you. We always release all of our freebies in there, and there are plenty of freebies to use, we promise. But we are in there with our actual team, brand partner, business. I'm getting my thoughts together. We also have our business group on Facebook, which, just to let you guys know and put a little bug in, we are putting together our brand partner vaults. We first did it when we jumped on here, and it wasn't what we wanted. But as we have progressed through the last 2020 and 2021, we have really figured out some really amazing things and systems. And so we're going to jump into that. So that's coming over to Get Oiling. We're so pumped for it. Our teams are already there. We've, we've run a mentorship group with them there, and I'm about to do that with my diamonds and the rest of their team. I'm really excited. That starts Monday. But anyway, back to the member group. This is what you guys need. This is your solution. And at Simple Grace, we're going to show you how we do it, how we have done it, and what we have to offer. Because I don't know about you, but starting a member community off of Facebook, and even using Get Oiling System, which it's a vault, if you don't know what that is, it, it can be a little bit overwhelming if you don't have your thoughts together. Well, we just decided what we would want to see in there as fellow brand partners, and we put that resource together. And so we're going to show that. Sarah's going to share her screen, and we're going to walk you through it really quickly. Time is very important to us, and as it, as it is to you guys as well. You could have this vault up and going if you decided that this looks like something you'd want for maybe like 20 minutes, honestly. You could be going in 20 minutes or less with it. And so it's really awesome. This is what your members are going to see when they jump into the member vault. All of these graphics are actually editable. We have all the Canva templates that you guys can take and make your own. If you do not like the style that we put in there, if some of you grabbed this from us before, you're going to be like, but that's not what mine looks like. All of the templates are now updated to have just a different look and feel, because as we change, we want to change things up. As you go into this, you can see the contents that are already preloaded into this vault. The first one is in big letters, because we like to make sure that everybody knows exactly where they need to go. And we want them to start there. But you can also see that we have monthly team announcements. We have the member community, which is also known as a discussion page. Funny story, when I kept seeing discussion page, and the first thing, I could not wrap my mind around it. I'm like, okay, discussion page. But literally what this member community, this discussion page is, is your Facebook group. That's exactly what it is. Get Oiling knocked it out of the park, setting it up. It's searchable. You can add things in there. You can, it's just, it's a great resource. Okay, so we're going to click on start here and just walk you through a few things. Now, when you have members that jump into it, whether they're new or old, having information at their fingertips that they can decide what they actually want to click into, now, they can run through this like a class. They can say, start here, or start class. Sarah can do that really quick. And they can just run through this if they're like, oh, I want to see what this all is. So as you can see, everything in red is what you would need to edit. There's not many spaces. Let's just be honest, because who wants to go in and edit like a zillion things? So this is what it looks like if they want to do it. But if Sarah wants to go back really quick, this is why we think it is so cool how Get Oiling has this set up, because they can go down, and let's say they want to know how to place an order. Instead of going through the class, they can click on that topic right there, and they can click on it and get to it. They need some resources. They can click on it. We talk about loyalty rewards. We actually have really tried to take our teams. So if, if you saw that there was a thing, learn more about loyalty rewards, that's linked over to Young Living's website, because we want to get people on there and comfortable with it. And that was intentional and on purpose, especially with the new website that, that launched. If they want resources, they can click there. Contact information. All of this stuff, again, is already in here. And then this is like the basics of product education. You guys can expound on this as you go further. Very beautiful. Sarah's going to click on one of these topics for you.
I'm going to go back just really quick. For anybody new, that doesn't know exactly what this is, and what it looks like for us in, in our businesses. So we get a new member, and what, and we add them to a vault, which automatically triggers an email to them, and it, and it lets them create their accounts and log into this member area. Now, when they log, and then they can just, they can log in whenever they want to go back to this. And then when they log in, they log into this screen here, which takes them to wherever they want to go. So that's where, in here, and they can click, you know, like Janelle said, wherever, wherever they want to go, to come back, come back again and again, and keep, and continue to learn. And, and like she said, it does link out, you know, if they want to know how to place an order. All of this, you know, it links out, learn more about subscribe to save, learn more about loyalty rewards. And they can just continue to go through this class. They can either hit next, and it will prompt them all the way through. We have some of our favorite resources for them to learn on their own. And then contact information, I'm just going to walk you kind of through the whole, the whole thing, so you can generally see what this is all about. Some information on what essential oils are, how to use them topically, roller blends, and then it goes into diffuser blends for, and anything, anything here, they can take and they can use. And like I said, it's always here for them. And it's always very searchable, which sometimes when you get into a member group on Facebook, you can kind of get lost. So this stuff stays super organized. And then down to, like she said, to product education, they can click on whatever they have questions about, how to dilute, the starter bundle oils, make sure red, and then it goes down into natural living, and, and starting to introduce thieves' products and things like that.
Yep, very awesome. And all of these graphics that are in there are all editable, and the Canva links come with that, so you guys can do that. Make it really easy. Make it your own if you don't like what we have and can change it up. Another part of it is the monthly team announcements. Now, this page is updated for October's promos. This is something that you would edit every single month. You would edit. This is, once you download, download this vault, this is yours. You get to be the hero of your story with your team. And so that's what this is here. And so you just update this every month. They can know that they can go there and find the promos. You could actually take this page link, and you could stick it in your, your member community, so they could always come to this every, every month and see it. You can put your monthly classes in here, your monthly giveaways. Those can always be deleted if you don't have that stuff. But this is a place where our team knows that they can find what the free gifts are that month. And then this is the member community, and we're going to touch on it very briefly. This right here, other than having the welcome and having some amazing information that anybody needs at the top, this is kind of like what your pinned post would be on Facebook. Like, I have a, a welcome post. Down here where it says write post, this is where you would put in what you were posting on your Facebook group. It would go right in this thing. You can add photos to it. It's fantastic. It's awesome. And you can add links to it.
And it's searchable. You know, this is where they can, so if, when you're thinking about putting this together, you know, we, we both went through in the beginning before, before we launched, and we put some of our favorite Facebook posts in here. So there's something that is preloaded in here, and you can just continue to, to add to it. But think to yourself, what posted really, really well in your Facebook group? Throw those in here and get them rolling, and then they can search. So this, this is your Facebook group off of Facebook, which is really, really great to have.
I agree. And another great thing about this is, is you can basically put in there what you want. But this could also be a potential, once you have this in place, you can send something to your team. You could post a link to this right here, to this community on your Facebook group, and say, hey, we know that social media is here. It's there. It's everywhere, but showing you what we want. I have a special thing for you. Click on this link, grab your favorite post, and go post it in this. That's a great way to incentivize your team, your leaders, to go put their favorite content and go put it in there. And make sure that you're incentivizing action. Maybe you're just going to give them away a Christmas spirit this month. You're going to draw from someone who goes in there and does it. Maybe. Maybe you could give away something for someone who goes in and puts the most posts in. That's a great way to add your content into your member community. There's lots and lots of different ways. I will tell you, the hardest thing about this is not setting up your, your member community. You're off Facebook, off social media. It's just getting people to realize something new that is there and getting them into it. I know that Get Oiling has talked about it before, different ways to get them to utilize it. We in Simple Grace have taught and shared different ideas to get people into your vault as well, your off, off-social-media community. And so there's lots of ideas floating around. Consistency is going to be your best friend with it. And another great thing, just, just to throw this tip out there, if you post in this member community, or anyone does, depending on how the settings are, they can get an email showing it. I know that someone said, I post a picture with a little like blurb about what that picture is, dot, 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 and I save it. And so they get that email, and then I edit it really quick and put the rest of the post in there. So people will get that in their email, and they'll be like, well, what is the rest of this information? I want to click on that. So it's an awesome, awesome resource for your team to have, and just to have in your back pocket, and to be utilizing now and training them how to use it. So it's, it's just fantastic. And just want to let you know that this is normally $69, and I would hope that you guys would realize that that is a lot of value. And I'm just going to say it bluntly and clearly, there is a lot of amazing things that you could utilize this for immediately. But because we love Team YL, we do have a $10 off coupon right now, and it's off-social is the code. So you can grab that, and you can get this and get it up and running. I think if you do not have this, a lot of people felt that, oh, my gosh, how am I going to connect with my team? Between Get Oiling CRM that they have in place for you, that is the best thing ever. And utilizing an off-site community thing, community group on Get Oiling, on your Get Oiling site, you have it made to continue and get going with it. Sarah and I want to switch really quickly, because some of you are like, I already got that. I'm already implementing it. I love it. Thank you. And you're welcome. And thank you so much for supporting Simple Grace. But Sarah and I want to talk about the art of connection. Right now, this is like so important. So there are three questions, and Sarah, do you want to go into this a little bit? There's three questions that people, when they meet you, are asking of you. And why connection? Why are we hitting this home about connection right now? Is because this is so important in your business, in moving forward, in growing, and all of that kind of stuff. And so we're just going to encourage you with this and just give you a little background information. So what are those three questions? And I will also say that, yes, this is what people say when they meet you. But there is also, what are they saying to you as they get to know you and are in a relationship? And I think that these three questions always come up. It goes through my mind when I am talking with people.
Yeah, and I, I think that, especially with the season that we're in, where, you know, the, the website, the website came out, and, and we know that it's going to take, taking, you have to be in the website live to be able to work bugs out, to be able to, to work our way through. And, and I think across the board from, you know, I just, I just got back from Silver Retreat, and I didn't talk to a single person who was not having the feeling that their members have been a little bit quiet. Their members were trying to kind of get over that new website, new changes. No matter what, when there are changes, it's going to be a struggle, because people just really don't love change, honestly. So when you, so we're using this, you know, the thought of, you know, reconnecting and connecting back with, with our members. You know, if you think about it, I didn't have a, yes, there were some problems, but the majority of our members are having a really great experience on a new website. It's starting to work kinks out. It's, it's very smart. It's very user-friendly, but we're just getting over that hump. So we're wanting to reconnect. And, you know, and what Janelle said, with the three things that people are asking of you, do you care for me? Do you care for me? Do they honestly feel like you are there and want them to be, want them to be here? And do you care for me? And the second one is, can you help me? And the third one is, can I trust you? And we, we were going with those, those three questions of what people are asking of us, and we wanted to use this. We have a survey that we are going to send out to our own members, and we wanted to give it for free for you, to give you a starting point to maybe reconnect, if you feel like you have lost that connection. And let me show you here what this survey looks like. Janelle is going to run through it here. Living Well Co. is Janelle's team. She made this on her, so we just flipped it back over. All of these Canva templates, you will edit them for your own team, edit the, the text for your own team. But we wanted to keep it so you know exactly how it felt for, you know, where we're coming from to share. So you can just flip it over and share from right where, where you're coming from.
Yep. So this survey was built right in Get Oiling, because this is one of the amazing features that have been added. And you guys need to give Greg and the team a huge round of applause. It was fantastic when I started, and it just gets better and better and better. And so thank you, Greg, and the Get Oiling team for always giving us new things and updating it. And side note, they've been updating so much that we actually have an announcement of why we have to do something. We'll, we'll get to that at the end of this. Almost done. Okay, so let's talk about what this survey is. This is me wanting to make sure that I am serving my team well, and that they feel seen, and that they feel heard, and that I can just get a really good marker of where that they are at. And so when I get ready to send this out, this is what is going to pop up for them when I send them this link. And of course, I want to know who they are, who, who's answering this, because it matters. Like, if, when we get down, I need to know who these people are. And so we have it where they're going to give the name, and then the email. And you guys, did you know all of that was editable? So like, instead of saying name, you can say, like I said, hi there, who is filling this survey out? Side note, Young Living sent out a survey that you get after you register for the holiday launch. And I was like, that's what spurred me to say, I love this. I really need to do a survey and connect with my team. Okay, so you can also see, I'm, I want to know, do they prefer text, email, or neither? Like, I want to know that. I want to get that updated in their system. I want to know what their birth month is, because then I can go through and I can add a tag for all of the January birthdays, all of the February birthdays, because that's another connection point that I truly do care about and have done before. But I had never brought this over to Get Oiling, so there, this thing is covered in so many bases for me. And what state they're in. I want to make sure that if I have an event going by them, I want to make sure that they get that information and get that personal invite to it. And then I go into, what topics are you interested in? So all of these topics, I'm just going to be really honest, are resources that Sarah and I have built out. And so when they say, I want All About Energy, I can just send them the link to our All About Energy page that we have built in Get Oiling. You guys, we love Get Oiling, if you can't tell. But all of this stuff, I want to know. Maybe they need some more information on managing stress. And so I want to make sure that they have that information that I can send them. And then, would you be interested in a 90-day plan to better wellness? Now, I'm going to tell you, would I love all of my team members to say yes to this? Well, chances are, they're probably not going to. And so that's why I felt confident putting this in there. And if a couple hundred people say yes, then guess what? In this season, I am going to go the extra 10, 100 miles to make sure that my team is getting what they need. Is this duplicatable? Absolutely not. But this is the extra thing that I am doing, because I want to make sure that I'm serving my team well. And then I also want to know is, how has your experience been with Young Living and Living Well Co.? Some people have experienced problems. Some haven't, like Sarah said, and I would say that the majority have not. We hear the negative, usually, not the positive. And, but I want to know if there's anything that I can help them with. And so that answers it. You can't read it? Is it too small? Don't worry. You guys can snag this freebie, and then you'll have it right in front of your face, so you can read through it. They're just really good questions that I can do. So once they submit that, what happens on the back end of it is that it gets them to the card. There's a card that goes on their contact information, and I can go through each of those things, take the info that I need from it, add my tags if I want to to certain questions, and I can write then and there, send out a text or an email, say, hey, I saw that you wanted to learn more about energy. Well, here's that, that information for you. I'm so thankful you, you filled out this survey. Another thing is, is we also added a button here, because sometimes people click out of stuff. And so all they have to do is click here to re-enter the survey. We wanted to make sure that that was abundantly clear to them. And I also wanted them to know, we have a member community. Go access it here. And so that's why that blatantly says that you can change it to whatever you want. But connection in this time is so important. So that is like our tip, one, is to use the survey. If you are in Get Oiling, and if you are not, I highly recommend that you grab it, because it's that fantastic of a system to use. And then work your way through it. My strategy, which I'm going to tell you about really very quickly, my strategy for this survey is to not overwhelm myself through this process, and know that if I don't get through my whole team by this week, thank goodness, it's not happening. But my goal is to get through this by December, and I'm sure that I'm going to hit that well before it. So you can work in like tens. You can work in twenties. What I did is went to my virtual office on Young Living, and I downloaded my whole team, my CSV list. And maybe Greg can tell us there's a better way, but this made sense to me. Doesn't mean it's the right way. And then what I did in that CSV is I copied it, and I took the amount that I wanted, and I'm going big or going home, and I'm doing 50, because I'm going to say that some people are not going to answer me, so I can do this. So 50 is, and by some, I mean like two. So I'm going to get 48 guesses that are going to fill this out. And so they're going to fill it out. Or so I got those 50 names, and then I imported that CSV to Get Oiling, and then put a tag on it. And I did it for each section that I wanted. And I did it for each section that I wanted. So when I am ready to send it out, all I have to do is filter out that or filter that tag. So I have that tag. And then I have my thing as a saved reply and I just send it to that group. And I wait and watch and be so filled with gratitude that my team honored me by filling out the survey. And I'm going to make sure that I tell them that also. So anyway, this is what it looks like. This is amazing. Sarah has two more tips for you of different ways to check in with your teams, whether it's a new member, whether it's a customer that you've had for a long time, whether it's a brand partner.
Janelle and I both, we also use the Life Steps app. There is a free version of it. There's a pro version of it, but we came across this and it thought it was very helpful too. And it is just a, uh, once we get a new member, we are going to hop on a Zoom, get in person if we can, and go through, go through with them and go through their priorities and what they're wanting to get out of their Young Living membership. And that's like I said, this was for free on, on Life Steps. You can download that app and this is a part of that. They just ask them questions that we would really need to know to be able to help them get started on the right path. We thought it was put together, you know, very well. You could easily put this together as a survey in Get Oil too. But we wanted to show you this. There's some really, really great questions that they have thought to ask. There's also a brand partner. There's also a, a, a brand partner, not really a survey, checklist that you can go through with your new brand partner. Somebody says, hey, I'm kind of wanting to know a little bit more about how to make money with Young Living. Get on a Zoom, hop through, you know, hop onto the brand partner. I don't have that one pulled up, but it also has really, really great questions to, to, to work your way, work your way through to help, you know, them, help know their goals. Just a, just a couple of different ways to, like I said, stay connected. I think right now reconnecting back with your team, your brand partners is where it's going to be at.
Yeah, we, I absolutely agree. So that is why connection is so important, is it's going to keep your business going in times where there's a pandemic going on, where the company's IT has a little bit less than savory results coming out. Maybe shipping is off because it's off in every industry. Let's just be really real about that. It's off in every industry. And so we just wanted to give you these things so that you had them in your hands and some different ideas. Because one thing I know is if I get stuck, I need to go to someone who is going to talk to me and is going to give me different ideas to continue moving, to gain that momentum again. And of course, Sarah is that person for me for the most part. But this is what we are hoping to do for you, like hit that connection as we go into this next season. And I like to say, yes, fall changed seasons, but even if the season I am in with my business is, is whatever it is, I've changed the season. I'm saying I, I'm changing it and I'm going to do something differently and make sure that I'm actually doing the work that I am called to do to be a good leader for my business. Because it's really easy to not do that. So, um, yeah. So there's a couple of questions, but I don't know if I can see them or miss them. Why not?
Oh, my God, you guys, this is so good. So there is, there are a couple of things. Obviously, there are some questions here, I think, for folks who have Simple Grace. Some of the things that you guys have already created, there's some questions about that. One of the things that I wanted to bring up here as well with the member area, and this is, you know, just another piece of, of moving people off of Facebook. How many of you guys have seen, maybe inside of a Facebook group, someone's story or testimonial that, you know, when you read it about a product, you just knew that, oh, my God, one day, like I would love to be able to share that with somebody. Wouldn't it be so cool for one of my members or future members to stumble across that information? So it's not just what's coming out of my mouth or out of Young Living's marketing, but you're seeing that social proof from other people. One of the amazing things that you can do with your Get Oil member area when you're using this to support your team is that on pages in your class or even on posts in the discussion room, where you're talking about specific products and product lines, people can leave, like you can incentivize people to leave their stories, their testimonials, their product experiences in the comments. So that that's all organized. So if you're going to be talking about sleep essence, that's where everybody who has ever used sleep essence on your team, you can, you could run challenges around this to get people to populate this information. That's so much more powerful than just, here's the marketing material, here's the ingredient information, here's where to buy it, right? So a lot of really great stuff you can do with this. And isn't this beautiful, you guys? So pretty. You guys make such nice stuff. So there's definitely some questions in the Q and A that I think are definitely here for you guys. And by the way, if you have asked a question in the chat, please make sure you come over to the Q and A and put it in here. So we don't miss you because there's a lot happening in the chat here. So let's see, so there's a question from Ashley about whether or not, let's say she's purchased a bundle from you in the past. Would this be an update to that? Like what does it look like if somebody has maybe already purchased like the brand partner package that you guys have?
So this one specifically is just the member community that we showed you. We, for those of you who don't know, we do create content, so we do have different courses out there. And I think Ashley, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, you are talking about the brand partner course that we have is the prospect vault.
I thought you, you guys, you guys had a vault, right? That you were.
Where potential customers and prospects of yours and your teams could go and get it. It also comes with, you build a landing page for your team member and they can send people there and collect their email for them and things like that until they're ready to realize and utilize Get Oil as a whole and how cool it is. So that's where that.
Okay, yeah. So, so you guys have, that's the lead generation. And this is now where we onboard and we keep our people. And you've also slipped in there that you have a brand partner one in the works as well.
Yes. No, yeah, we, okay, yes, we do have a brand partner one that is in the works. Sarah and I were just like, it's time, like we're ready to do this. We feel confident about our resources and what we have to offer as brand partners and to our team. So yeah, that's coming. You guys, there's so much coming that if you're not on our email list and you're not in our Facebook group, you are totally going to miss the amazing things that are happening.
All right, Janelle and I did. Janelle and I did a brand partner mentorship, mentorship that we put together. We ran it last month or the month before.
I think we ran it in August.
In August. And just testing some things out, we didn't want to put anything out there that we didn't want to, you know, we didn't test ourselves. And we had very, very good reviews from that, from, just from our team. And, and new brand partners that, you know, caught some fire and, and felt like they were understanding a little bit more. So we're in the works of, you know, kind of putting that into a vault for everybody to be able to use. That's what that is.
Okay, I want to show you guys real quick. So you are super clear on what we're talking about here. You go to simplegraceco.com, you will see this page here. You've got the easy button for Get Oilings. So pretty. I love the work you do. All right. So what we're talking about here, there is a custom homepage and lead funnel course that they have. This complete member vault, that's what you just walked through, right? And the code is what again?
Off social.
Off social. So you can go over here and purchase this and use the code off social. So go to simplegraceco.com and you're going to look for this member vault right here. And when you go to get it, you're going to put in off social right here. Off social, apply. Oops, no, off social. It's trying to auto correct me and say official. Voila, there you go. So you can get that member vault at the sale price there. So there are other things here. The brand partner system was what we just made mention of, which is a really cool way for you to be able to give your brand partners a sort of system that they could use that's on your, like Get Oil site. So it's like leveraging the Leg Builder links, which is really smart, really cool. So you guys go over to simplegraceco.com to get access to this, done in twenty minutes. Easy to modify, member vault that you guys can use. And that survey freebie is at simplegraceco.com/survey. And that's where you can actually go and get access to that survey. And that's totally free for you to import into your system. And when they sign up to get that, that survey, will they be on the list to get notified for this other stuff you guys are working on?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Awesome. So wow, 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 more questions. All right. So Sheila asks, are these set up as online classes within a community group? So this is a vault, right? So you guys have a vault that has a discussion room and an online class and, and maybe a page or something like that inside of the member vault, right?
Yeah, it's, it's set up to be able to work with a basic plan.
Perfect. Okay. And to that, to that end, Donna asked, can we have a good interactive group with just one vault? Yes, you can. Absolutely. And the most important vault that you can have is Young Living Brand Partner. If you're only going to have one, if you're a basic and that's where you're at for now, the most important vault you can have is the one that serves and educates your members. And that's the one we're talking about here today. All right. If I already have Simple Grace, is there an upgrade for it? This is something that's new. This is something that's new. So go check it out. Very, very cool stuff today. All right. And is there vault or the selling member VP are both oriented? Holly, this is for members, but stay in the loop. And there's one coming for brand partners, it looks like. Ooh, here's an interesting question. It's, you know, sort of tangential, but whatever. How do you follow up with inactives?
Janelle, the postcard. Your postcard.
Oh, what? If you guys can't tell, I'm a little off. I'm a little sick this week. And so everything is a tiny bit of a struggle. Yes, actually. Okay. So with my inactives, if you, before it was really incredibly hard to even find your inactive list if you weren't paying attention every month. Now I will tell you that you can go back in your VO and let's say you go to January of 2020 and you can find all of your current members as of January 2020. And, and pay attention to who falls off. I mean, that's getting a little more technical. I'm not going to get into it. But what I, what I do with my inactives is I have a little card that goes out that I created. I actually hand wrote it out. I know I wish I had one really close.
It's got to be around here somewhere. It's so cool.
I hand wrote it out because I want that personal touch. I signed it. I'm just really trying to connect with them, making sure that I owned. If I had done something to not give them what they were hoping and searching for, in a way, I mean, I'm going to take ownership of that, but also just to say, we want you to come back. Like I want you to know that I'm here if you ever decide to just reach out. I give them my phone number, my Get Oil text phone number, just so you guys know. And I took that, put it on a Canva, in Canva, and then I printed it out. And because even though I'm not handwriting every single one, they at least are going to get it. And it is something that I put time and effort into and it looks handwritten and it's not. And it's very simple and easy to send that out to your members. So inactives, definitely connect with them. You know, if we're going to go along the line of the survey of connecting with your team right now, I would suggest that if you have inactives that you want to reach out to, start that connection again with them. And again, take ownership if you feel like there was an area that maybe you did not serve them well in and say, I just want to make sure that I, or that you know, I am here for you. I want to serve you well. And if you have any questions ever, just let me know. You could also make a survey to go with it. They can air whatever they feel. Half the time is, is people put stuff on a shelf and they forget to use it. And that's all it is. And getting that touch point with them is going to help them to maybe use it. Maybe they just need to know how to use that product. So.
I love it. I love it. There's, uh, let me see what else. That was a good question and thank you. All right. How do we purchase the member community template from Simple Grace? That's go to simplegraceco.com and then scroll down to where you see the members vault. So you can purchase that there. And don't forget, you can use that coupon code. The Life Steps app, which was mentioned here, that is, it's something that's separate from Get Oil. I don't remember the name. If somebody has the, like the link to it, you can put it over here in the chat. But it is something, we actually have a training that one of our, our community members, this amazing girl named Mercedes, came and showed us how she was actually using Life Steps as sort of a content provider for, for your, for her Get Oil site to where she could, you know, take the images of product bundles, go to her MYL, make the bundles and then list those things on her Get Oil site, which was really cool. It's, it's advanced, you know, in terms of, of a strategy, but especially at the free level. I mean, why not play around with it? It's, uh, it's, uh, it is, it is an app, right? It's an app that has like a website for you, but like it is an app fundamentally at the end of the day.
Can I just chime in? I want to say that.
Please, please, yes.
We'll have an app with it. Sarah and I do not use it. We use a lot of the resources on it, but our, our website is Get Oil and because of the functions that we can create around it and with all that stuff. Life steps though, as a content like provider is really amazing. They have so much good stuff in there. They absolutely do. Mercedes is a genius because using that stuff that is already there and already created and taking it and utilizing it is so smart.
And that training that we're mentioning that, that Mercedes was on with us, Greg has just put that into the chat here. It is on our YouTube channel. Okay, so Kathy asks, what, question one, did you send the survey by email to all of your customers?
I am going to send it to all of them. Sarah is taking a different route. So you guys have some options and she's going to send it just to her personally enrolled. So, I mean, you have many options to do it. Just my tip is to do it in the chunks that are going to keep you motivated to continue through your list and to get to everybody.
Yep. All right. And then the other one is the home, like have you updated the homepage program? Is that still the same? So you guys have the template in place for the homepage. Was it, were there any changes to that one?
So we are in process of two point O. And what really got us really excited about it is we had started that. And then we were showing Greg some features that we were just loving. And he's like, well, let's, let's just go change some things. So Greg, the superstar that he is, if you guys don't know, on mobile now, there is Parallax and it's pretty fantastic. And so we have Simple Start to Get Oil 2.0 that is going to be coming out within the next month. And it's going to be amazing. Sarah can give a little, if she wants to, I don't know if she has it pulled up. We can give you a little view of what this actual homepage template is going to look like.
Yeah, I can share the screen. Greg, we did get rid of the words that we had before. We were talking to Greg and we, so when we do this, and this isn't all the way finished. So when we do this, sometimes we put words to fill spots. There's probably some in here. Greg will laugh because of our, it's just, sorry, it's an inside joke with Greg on that one.
No, let's just say it. In, we put social as deaf. We did. We were just playing around. We love social media. We use it for our businesses. It's been amazing. But just like, it says, hi, I'm Sarah, your farm girl with the camera. I'm the coolest ever. She absolutely is the coolest ever, but that's not going to stay there. Actually, if it was my website, I'd think about it just because it's.
So we're just wanting to, we just, it's just a different template for you to use. The original template or the original course, Greg has made so many amazing changes that we wanted to come out with this kind of two point O to be able to use all of those changes and, and maybe simplify it a little bit and walk people through a little bit differently. So that is coming. This is just kind of what it's going to look like. And it is just a different look, just a different look. And we're, you know, we really love it. And like I said, it's not completely done yet. This will also come with, you know, the same, we will have a, a lead funnel and that goes along with this as well, a welcome email series that we're going to just revamp, redo, make it a little, uh, just something new.
Yep. There's so much, again, you guys, there's so much on the horizon with Simple Grace that you want to be a part of this. We've had questions since we became, because people would go to our website about the eleven day reset. We have works to release that for you guys to utilize with your teams. So there's just so, so much stuff.
Well, we're looking forward to bringing you back again to share more of this because that is super exciting. How many of you guys are so excited about this, guys? This is really, really reasonably priced, already super beautiful, like done for you stuff that you can just swap some things out. You guys give the Canva templates. Anytime you see an image, they've got a Canva template there. And there's a full walkthrough of how to do it. So if you don't feel super confident in getting things set up and personalized, this is a really great option to, you know, to just kind of have those things done. And even if you want something that's more personalized, big picture, like it's so worth it to save yourself the time and just go bloop, bloop, there it is, swap out these two things and voila, now I look like a total boss as I continue to grow my business. I think it's just such a great idea. Like all of these things that you guys have developed are so awesome. So Terry, you must have missed it. Maybe you did. We do have, it's not a survey making template, it's our custom pages. So we actually have a training on this and maybe team, if we could pull that one up and put that in the comments as well in the chat here. We did, it's called custom surveys, I, I think, or custom lead forums is, is like the title on our YouTube channel. It's fairly recent to this video that we're doing right now, where you can actually go. where you can actually go through and create, you know, whatever questionnaire that you want. It doesn't have to be a survey per se. I showed in that training a call application form for like a discovery call for coaches. So lots of different options there, and that's just simply on custom pages. You just add additional forums and adjust those settings to be able to have multiple choice answers, checkboxes, or radio buttons, and long and short form answers. Really, really cool. That is a one-time price list that you see listed on Simple Grace. I don't think you guys have a monthly membership that you're offering at this point, right?
Nope. In the works.
Oh, okay. All right, Sarah asks, "Any tips for getting members to engage and log into the Member Vault? This has been an obstacle for me." This is an important thing to bring up, right? Because everybody's hanging out on Facebook. It's where people go to waste time. People don't come to waste time on your website. You have to actually get them to go there to log in. So we are talking about changing habits. So what are some of the things that you guys have been doing to help encourage people to engage with the vault?
Again, is create those curiosity posts in your member community in your vault so that they want to click on it from their email, and then connection. Let's go back to that. That is going to help tremendously to do that. If you have a person who asks a question, direct them to the Member Vault. Send them the link, say, "Hey, can you pop this in here? Because I bet someone else needs to hear the answer, and I'll answer it in there for you." Those are small things, but they're going to make a world of a difference. And then also, incentive, I go back to it, incentivizing action. You can run some, something, maybe a challenge. I know that people have done scavenger hunts. They have done, like, on their member community, all that kind of stuff. I will tell you, all of that is going to fall to deaf ears if you have not started to work on connection with your teams. And so to go back, that's truly where it begins. But again, Ashley and the team at Get Oiling have talked about how to get people into your vaults. And Simple Grace, I think we have a few posts talking in recordings about different ideas for doing that. And so I hate to, like, be redundant if you want to go search that out, but there's, there's so many ways to do it. But getting started and actually doing something and being consistent is going to be your best friend.
Absolutely. One of the things that I've been working with clients on in terms of intake to start new customers off the right way is treating these member areas that you create as a step two in the enrollment process. That way, when you're getting new people started, their expectation is that step one is replacing the order. Step two, we're doing a visual walkthrough orientation. We're signing you into the member area, showing you where to go back. And then for your care calls, as you're following up on a regular basis, when you're going to be sharing product information or any kind of information at all, instead of saying everything or going and hand-delivering and spoon-feeding information and links and stuff, you say, "It's in our member area. Here's where you'll find it. Go log in, and you'll find it on the page called blah, blah, blah." And then they have to actually go through the steps, right? And this is like, like Janelle was just saying, this has to do with your communication. It has to be a manual thing with your personals and anyone else that you're in touch with. There is no, like, we're not going to just change habits overnight for people that we're not actually interacting with on a daily basis. We can hope to. And maybe some people who are super receptive will, but that's just generally not how people work. It's like herding cats or, you know, trying to get toddlers to do stuff. But it's grownups, and that's just, it's, it's how we are, unfortunately, especially in the very distracting world of the internet.
Yeah, and I kind of treat new members, I will, I will introduce them to the Member Vault and go through the Member Vault, and there's a welcome kind of an email series that said, you know, every so often, there'll be something, "Hey, did you see this in the Member Vault?" And then it's, "Oh, by the way, we also have a Facebook group." But the member, if, you know, coming from me saying, "This is where you need to go." New members don't have a problem picking up on that, and they, they really love that. It is, you know, it's training, you know, some of the, some of the changing habits is, this can be a struggle.
And one of the things you can do too, if you've got people whose habit, it is currently to just, you know, text you or Facebook message you or ask you in your existing group, "Hey, what about blah, 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 information on XYZ?" You can say, "It's in the Member Vault, right? Here's, here's the URL to the Member Vault. You can find it there." So you can actually just start having your default be not to answer the question in the place where you don't want the conversation to happen, but to move that over. And this, this is a habit we have to change in our own communication, right? We have to honor what's right and good for our business and the direction we want to go. And sometimes that means having boundaries around where we answer questions and to what degree. And don't, don't worry about, you know, like, "Oh, am I, am I doing what they want me to do?" Like, you're, you're still providing for your people in a loving and, and solid way. You're just saying, "Here's where it is now. This is the new way. This is the new way." And you're going to be a broken record for a bit, and that's okay. Just keep starting your new people the same way. All right, so Alison has a question, and I think that this is really probably going to be more of a, Greg, I don't know how to answer this question. She has, so Alison is on Basic, has one vault and one class. She has Grow Workspace's 28 to Elevate. She doesn't want to lose it, but she likes to be able to maybe disable it or to like not use it in some way and then have, you know, a Member Vault that's actively in use. How might one go about doing that? Would we just maybe keep the, the pieces of the vault? Like, well, no, I don't know. Greg, what was your suggestion there?
There isn't a good way to do that. I think that's a wishlist item. Some people have requested some ability to do a disabling. I mean, I suppose you could like copy the pages out of the vault, maybe. That might be an option. The discussion rooms would go away. The class could separate from that vault. So there are, like you said, maybe pull some of the pieces out of it, depending on what you're doing. If you do that and you delete the vault, ultimately, I think it will remove any of the comments and discussion rooms that are in there. So when you delete it, it does take that away, so. But yeah, he can message us. We can add on a vault easier than he can do what you're looking at there right now.
That's right. Yeah, that's, that really is, I think, the easiest solution, especially because I mean, the Grow Workspace, the 28 to Elevate Vault, that's going to be really great for engagement. Maybe even depending on, on sort of how you brand yourself, it's a great thing to have leads go through. So, you know, now you'll have something that serves your leads and something that serves your members. So it may be that it's just a good idea to just add on a vault to your plan. You don't have to go up to the next plan yet if you're not ready to. So just reach out, and we can set that up. And if you decide that you really do just need to have the one and keep things where they're at, because that 28 to Elevate Vault from Grow Workspace came from a resource bundle, it's just a matter of a couple of clicks to re-import it if you wanted to use it again in the future. So that'd be a pretty simple thing to put back into place. Holly had a question. If you already have a Member Vault that you've created that's got classes and stuff like that in it, can we merge it with the, with the Simple Grace Vault without rebuilding it? So Holly, what I would recommend here, excuse me, would be to, to identify what the pieces are of these two vaults that you love the most, and then combine them into the house that you prefer. So if you like the Simple Grace one better, then move the pages or copy the pages and the classes and stuff from, from the, from one into the other, right? You could also have multiple classes inside of a single vault. So if you have your Grow Workspace Bundle Class, for instance, which I teach in the How to Move Your Groups course, and that's at GetOiling.com/moveyourgroups. That's a free course, you guys. If you wanted to do it the hard way, the long way, then you can, you can import the Simple Grace stuff in there. If you have, so when, you can't copy a discussion room and import all of the comments and everything into a new vault. So if it's already an active vault and people are actively in it, and you don't want to lose the history and the conversations and things like that, then what I would do is get this new Simple Grace Vault, import the whole thing, but then take its constituent parts, the page, the class, that stuff, and then even copy some of the branding and the copy that they have into your existing vault. So it's, it wouldn't be a rebuild, but it would be a little bit of a renovation. All right, well, the price increase on 2.0, are you guys to that point yet? Do you know yet?
So a lot of people have our first course, our homepage course, Complete Funnel, and we are going to do a little bit of à la carte. So this is going to be a little bit longer answer than what you just, you're like, "Get to the point, lady." Okay, so we are going to do a little bit of an à la carte with it because not everybody needs... Sarah's laughing at me. Not everybody needs the full Complete Funnel because they already have the Simple Start to Natural Living freebie funnel, full funnel, that's with the first one. And so if you just want that homepage, you can get just that homepage. If you need just that homepage, and if you need the whole thing, then you can grab the whole thing. Price is going to stay the same. If you guys did not catch, we are brand partners. We know what it looks like to make sure that what is going out every month with our expenses makes sense for our businesses and is in good shape. And so we love Team Young Living, and we are going to keep resources at prices that make sense for people of all different levels with Young Living. And one thing that has stuck with me, when, when we first talked to Ashley, when we were going to release that homepage, actually, the Member Vault, that's what we did first. When we were going to release the Member Vault back in the beginning, she just said, "Just remember the people that you are serving, like who your audience actually is, and it's our fellow Team Young Living people. We love you guys, and we want to make sure that it's not going to break the bank to grab the resources and have something beautiful to utilize with what Get Oiling already offers, which, by the way, everything they offer for the price that they offer it at." Fantastic.
Thank you. All right, so we have two more questions that are very specific for you guys. There was a question here about market. Is this good for Canadians in the chat? Liz asked that. So your, this Member Vault specifically that you guys have, is that set up? Or would that be easy to modify, or like, tell us a little bit about what this would look like for Canadian market?
Yeah, everything in there, all the text is editable. So you would need to go through, and you would need to re-link out to any, you know, any Canadian links, whether that's, you know, on the Young Living website. For the most part, we do link out to everything, you know, if it's linked, it goes to the Young Living website. So you would just need to go through and find that. And also, since your products are a little bit different, you know, the Canva templates, all of the images, you know, those things, you would need to, to make work for, for the Canadian market, but it is, you know, you would be able to edit that.
And we do have our Canadian sisters, I don't know what to call them. They have purchased the vault before, and they have made those edits, and so it's definitely there. It's probably something in the future we could maybe connect with one of them and get it set specifically for Canadian markets, but that's just another thing to put on the, as Greg says, the wishlist.
And so what this would look like then is really, because most of the links that you guys have in this built-in member area, go to the Young Living site anyway. You would just be looking for more or less the same thing in your market. So this would be applicable not just to Canada, but to other global markets as well. You're just looking for the URLs that are in the vault that go to the Young Living website. You just make sure you find the same thing, and it's good for you to know your way around the Young Living website in your market so that you can be able to point your people more adequately toward where they need to go. So that'll be a pretty simple fix, it sounds like. All right, so do you need Canva Pro to utilize the Canva templates that you guys have included with this Member Vault offering?
No, you don't need, you don't need Pro. I mean, there may be a few images that might be Pro, but you would just flip them out with something that comes in the Basic, and there's really beautiful images in the Basic too.
And, and most of our graphics are our own images. Sarah's a fantastic photographer. And so I think basically everyone is. And if we are sharing the template with you, you can utilize every piece that's on there. Yep, and you can buy elements if you want to, but every element that is in our Canva templates is for you to utilize and use as is, so.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, another question for you guys, and then I've got, I think, a more general one here from Ilka. Janelle, what proportion of your content is free to access outside the vault compared to the non-paid course content inside the vault? I have a paid vault, but I like the idea of sending people to a vault for free info too, but people won't want to go inside unless they already know there's value there, like free content. So I, I think what we're talking about here today, I mean, you guys don't sell vaults that people sell. Like, you're not selling a vault for resale. This is to serve your members, not to sell people, right?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, and the vaults that you have are actually courses that you're selling from, you know, from your website, from Simple Grace Co.
Yeah, so we have courses, and within those courses, we have a resource link for whatever vaults are included or templates for our homepage. And if you're speaking specifically for people who are not yet your customers, that would be going more towards the brand partner. I can't even think of what it's called, but that one, that Brand Partner Prospect Vault. I don't know, Sarah, help me, of what it is, because it has a ton of education in there, and you can send it to it. I will say, for Sarah and I, we also have a Brand Partner Resources thing that we put together for our teams after we ran that Brand Partner Mentorship. And so they have a link where they can go to different topics, click on it, and then it gives them a URL to share with their prospective customer. And so there's many different ways to do it. I hope I answered that. I don't know.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, I think that is a really important distinction to make. The content that you're sharing outside of your vault, generally speaking, is going to be the stuff that's on your, your website, and that's the stuff that faces your leads. It will obviously face your brand, your customers and brand partners as well, but you have an exclusive space for your customers and brand partners inside of the vault. So the things that you put on your blog, for instance, might be really leading conversations toward a one-on-one conversation with you so that they might become a customer, at which point you add them to these exclusive resources. So we're not really like, we're not really selling or trying to convince anybody to get into a vault. We're actually giving it to them, you know, as a thank you when they sign up to be a customer. Okay, let's see. All right, so there's one more here. Ilka, you're asking about how to get people in your Facebook group to really see the value of your videos, the information you have on oils. You did a five-day challenge posting 10 to 15-minute videos. No engagement. Asked what they liked the most. They said, "Like them all." Okay, so the one thing that stands out to me here, because I think that all of this, that, you know, the idea here that we're putting videos into a Facebook group for people to consume, there's actually two things. Number one, if you're going to be creating content for a group on Facebook, I generally would recommend that you have much shorter videos, even shorter than 10 to 15 minutes. Think two to three to five minutes at the most, because people, like we mentioned earlier, are on social to waste time, not to do very serious things. And they're not even generally usually there to shop unless they're going to the, you know, marketplace, looking for yard sale items or furniture or something like that. Like, people are on Facebook to scroll, and so if you give them something that's bite-sized, that's going to, they're going to be more receptive to that. But when you want to ask the question, you know, what they liked the most, that's a conversation you want to have one-on-one. You can't really expect to ask a targeted sort of prospecting question in a large roomful of people and get a meaningful response. I mean, outside of a one-on-one, even the dynamic changes, right? I have calls with people regularly who are interested in working with me one-on-one. When there is more than one person on that call, 90% of the time, even if they know they want to work with me and take next steps, if there's a second person there, it necessitates a second call. There's a connection that needs to happen when you're helping someone to make a decision, to make a change in their life, and working with you in this case means purchasing Young Living products and having your guidance on that journey, right? So in order for them to decide for themselves that this is the thing they need to do, you really need to be moving these people over onto one-on-one calls with you. So what I would do is really focus on making quick videos and aren't talking about how these products have changed your lives, but making quick tip videos about how people can do things themselves to improve their life, and then letting them know, "Hey, I have got this whole trove of information, and I'd love to help you navigate so that you don't have to spend all the time that I have to figure this stuff out. I offer free consultations. Here's how you take advantage of them." And then all of your goals are to move the people in the groups to the DMs, one-on-one, and from the DMs to the phone or to Zoom. That is our number one goal. So engagement on social really just looks like getting people to stop scrolling their, their cats and babies and puppies and politics, and to notice that you're doing something that's interesting to them long enough for you guys to start a conversation that could lead off of the platform so that you can connect them with Young Living. So I hope that that helps. And I, and I hope that you devote as much of your energy as possible toward those one-on-one conversations to where, when you share a quick video, because now you've got all these great videos, you say, "Hey, I've actually got a video that'll help you learn more about XYZ thing that we're talking about right now." You give that to them, and then after they watch it, you say, "Okay, so what did you like best about it?" And they're not going to say everything. I mean, if they do, if they say, "Well, I liked everything," you say, "Great, are you ready to get started?" And you actually go sign them up, right? So, yeah, you've got it. Did I, did I miss something hilarious? It looks like I missed something hilarious, Janelle. Kids, right? All right, we're so glad that you guys have stuck. Alright, uh, we're so glad that you guys have stuck around with us today. I'm so grateful that you guys came on, Janelle and Sarah. We love you all so much. Uh, we'll have to share some, some fun, uh, kids' stories sometime. When I first started doing this stuff years ago, I think it was like Google meetups or something 10 years ago. My, it was like a magnet. If I was on the phone or on a video call, suddenly a child would appear behind me. And my office was in my, my, uh, um, dining room of this old house I lived in. There was just always, yeah, anyway. But we're cool with the babies. I see Grace down there. I see, I see like a little mohawk. Hi, Grace. There she is. Oh my God, she's like, okay. Alright, so, uh, thanks again, you guys. Uh, simplegraceco.com. Uh, you guys want to get access to this member vault, start moving your people off of Facebook? Uh, start getting that ball rolling. Uh, go to simplegraceco.com forward slash survey to get access to a survey that's done for you that you can start using with your customers. Uh, import it straight into your Good Oiling account. Janelle, Sarah, I hope we have you back very soon to talk about these many things that you're working on. And in the meantime, you guys have a great week, have a great weekend, and we'll see you back here next week.
Thanks, Ashley. Thanks, guys.